Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Breezy Point Land and Zoning Commission meeting. I will call meeting order and ask for approval of the July 13th minutes.
Who they be approved as submitted?
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second. Any discussion with those minutes? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye or give a pass. Councilman Lee is on report.
Joe, we're having a hard time picking you up.
You know, I'm right in front of your face.
Put it right in front of your face. Don't talk.
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you. It's great. I'll trade them out.
I'll talk longer then.
We're honored to have the former mayor, and I assume the former mayor is our new liaison?
I am the new liaison. That is indeed correct.
Fantastic.
Kind of filling the shoes of Mark, and here I am. So, there's not a whole lot to report from the meeting on Monday. There was pretty much minimal things talked about. We had like a follow-up and summary of the butterfly release. Road Committee had talked a little bit about the progress on the Bushman Road Project. There's going to be a meeting, Road Committee meeting, talking about that tomorrow. And what am I missing, Patrick? Anything significant?
Officially, we swore you in, gave you...
I was going to say, other than that minor thing of me getting sworn in. I think that was about it. The meeting was over about 7:30, so it wasn't very long and pretty much straightforward.
So, we also recognize the Citizens of the Year at the cemetery, which included yourself and the gentleman to your left and his wife. We recognize this as Breezy Point Citizens of the Year.
Yes. That was very much appreciated.
And congratulations.
Well, thank you.
This guy deserved it. My wife might have. Thank you.
I didn't deserve, so.
Any questions with the councilman? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda is open forum number one. Would anyone like to speak during open forum number one? If you would, please approach the podium and introduce yourself, name and address.
This is the dormitory subject?
Not yet. That'll become enough. Well, I will close open forum number one and move to the next agenda item, which is a public hearing to consider a conditional use application by White Birch Inc. I will open the public hearing for that conditional use application and ask the applicant if they would like to make a presentation. David and Jeff are both here. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Planning Commission, public, staff. My name is David Landecker. I live at 8581 Renn Drive, Breezy Point, and I'm here tonight to represent this particular application that's before you. I know that you've been given the application, staff report, and various documents that we've submitted, so I'll do my best to keep it short and answer questions that you might have. Essentially, back in 2014, about seven years ago, this plat was created. The M&amp;H Complex plat was created as one tract to accommodate a conditional use that was approved at that time for adding on the dormitory building number two, which is on the southern end of the project, to the kind of the left, the jog piece there. And at that time, the whole property was consolidated into one parcel to accommodate land area as well as impervious coverage, et cetera. And so, and also at that time, north of the maintenance building that's there, if you were to go out through today and those that you may have visited or be familiar with this project, there's fenced-in area and an area that the resort currently brings, you know, unused equipment or equipment that might be used in the future, might be building, extra building materials, washers and dryers that maybe aren't working that they accumulate, and then when they get enough, they take them to get recycled at the landfill and different things like that that are in there. And that was quite a fairly significant part of the discussion or topic at the time. The conditional use for that area was approved. As far as requiring screening along the road, which again, if you've been by there, that area is screened really well. There's both existing vegetation as well as trees that had been planted and are growing, which we intend to, you know, tend to remain there. But what we've done is, you know, the topic of this particular application is adding that proposed dorm building. So, we're adding some additional rooms for a dormitory for transient employees. And in conjunction with that parking, which when you take the whole site as one unit, still keeps us below the 50% impervious coverage that's required for that zoning district. So, we aren't asking for any variances or deviations from the ordinance as it relates to side yard setbacks or impervious coverage. All of those things meet, you know, your ordinance requirements. There's a stormwater pond that's to the north that exists, and again, was part of the application before this, but that will remain intact and continue to be used for stormwater, both for our project as well as other properties and the street adjacent to the site, et cetera. So, the only deviant that there is or the thing that we're requesting that's different than the ordinance is that we're, there's 30 rooms, two people per room, which gives us a total of 30 rooms, right? When you do the math on that for parking, it would tell us that we would need 15. However, that being said, the primary purpose for this dormitory is for our workers that come from, you know, international or outside of the state of Minnesota for sure, and most of them don't have vehicles. So, as an example, the dormitories that are below us under the south, there's 54 staff that use those, occupy those right now. Of the 54, there's only four motorized vehicles that accompany those for use. Otherwise, the resort provides bicycles for them to get back and forth to their particular job site. We shuttle them. You see the Breezy Point shuttle buses going back and forth. Those also come here and accommodate the folks that, you know, that stay, the guests that stay or the workers that stay at the, in the dormitory. So, in the, you know, the dormitory itself, if you have looked at those plans, there's a set of building plans there. You know, we're accommodating those with not only the 30 sleeping rooms, so to speak, but also there's kitchens and restroom facilities for them to shower and wash and bathe, et cetera. And fairly significant because we have, you know, the staff that are there like to eat their traditional foods from the areas that they might come from, whether it's from Europe or Jamaica or Mexico. And so, they like to take their little common area and use that for, you know, preparing their own foods. They do a lot of their own food preparation. They buy locally to, you know, accommodate that. They go to the local stores here at the corner, and when they have the ability to get transportation to town, they do that as well. So, it's sort of a little bit even more of an upscale lodging facility dormitory than the ones that are on the south. I mean, we have, you know, learned from our experiences below that, you know, to help the staff here, you know, be accommodating for their work details to provide them some, you know, additional rooms, I guess, if you would, to, both space-wise for them to be in as well as, you know, restrooms and the common areas. I think that's pretty much about it. The existing things that are out on the site now that are in that fenced-in area and that are kind of laying around the site will all be removed off of that site. That site will not be used for any kind of debris storage from the resort, such as, again, the things that have been in there before, tires and, you know, lawn chairs and beds and things like that that might intermittently come and go out of that site. Those will be, you know, either different locations on properties that are obscure and won't be seen, but not on this property. They'll be removed and, you know, not part of this application. They'll be removed as part of a condition if you so choose. The street that goes through there where the parking is, is one way. So, I mean, it's one way. You go to the north and come out onto the street, and that's the only, it's a narrow drive. It's about 10 feet wide, so it'll just be a one-way street going through there. And that's why the parking is diagonal. We have one handicap stall, and not that that's totally necessary, but there's that possibility that, you know, we do have staff that have those, you know, disabilities, and this would accommodate that as well. So, that's where we're at with it. Any questions?
Any questions?
I have one. So, with the existing dormitory structure that you have, what's the parking situation with that? Is there, you commented that everybody requires parking that's currently in that structure. Is there excess parking there?
There is some, I mean, again, if you've been out there and I, if you pull your picture down a little bit, yeah, so right across from the maintenance building, the whole western or eastern side of that is parking. And so, we have, you know, there's quite a few employees that, you know, park here from a maintenance staff perspective. We have maintenance and landscaping, and, you know, there's quite a number of people that park there outside of, you know, our guests. It's also the laundry, or the dormitory people that are transient employees. It's also the laundry area, so we have laundry vehicles that are staging and coming in and out of there down below. So, I quite frankly don't think we even need 10 up there. You know, we don't need the 10. We showed 10 because we can, you know, maximize the space that we have there, but would sure certainly be willing to reduce it to less than that because I, you know, I guess I do believe that there's adequate space for, you know, for those needs. But we are showing it that way because I was trying to maximize the space we had and get close to the 50%. So, that's, you know, kind of what it is. But I don't know. Jeff, do you have anything you wanted to add to parking?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I think your question was more about the dorm, and I think there's about eight spots along the northern...
Will you just name your address?
Jeff Johnson, 9252 Breezy Point Drive with White Birch. There's about eight spots parking along the north side of the older dorm part.
The new driveway you're putting in, that's only going to be about 10 feet wide, you said?
Correct. Just for one-way traffic.
And you plan on leaving the trees there according to everything said?
Right. The buffer that was already created will remain, other than the entrance that we need to get out. But otherwise, the trees that have been developed along there and the underbrush that is there, which is fairly significant, will not be disturbed.
Lee, any questions?
So, if I'm looking at that right, so there'll be like an in and out to Airport Road?
The in is already there. So, the in exists. It's the lighter colored shading areas, the botuminous that's already. It's that particular in that's closest to us for the maintenance building is both an in and an out. So, the maintenance can come in there and go out there. So, we'll be able to travel through either the parking lot and/or come in that entrance and, you know, get into that new dormitory space.
My concern, it may not be appropriate for the issue we're actually discussing, but I would be concerned about where all this stuff in what I call the boneyard is going to end up. And you mentioned it will be on other property and will be suitably covered, but it took a long time to get it suitably covered where it's at now.
Well, I, you know, so there's a lot of, a lot of things that are in that location now that I think as they dig into it is suitable for recycling at the landfill.
I would agree, but every company's going to have a boneyard.
Right. Well, I mean, and if you did, if you did a drive-through of all Breezy Point properties, you would find that one place which is obscure that you don't see is White Birch Championship Golf Course. They have a maintenance building up there that's up and behind in their properties, and they have quite a few things like this up there that are scattered around. So, it's going to be in an area like that that nobody has recognized, not in a high-traffic area like this where you're going to drive by and say, oh, my gosh, they decided to put their stuff up by the, you know, the bank in Breezy Point in that open field, you know. I don't even think that would be allowed. We'd have to come here to probably get a conditional use permit for storage of things like that. So, our goal is to either have it enclosed in an indoor place if it's, you know, if it requires that kind of care, or that it, you know, might be, it might end up in that White Birch Golf Course Maintenance Building area. But, you know, I'm hoping that they'll find that most of it ends up recycled in the landfill, so.
Another observation that I have, which also may not be appropriate for this, but I assume this is going to be both male and female residents.
Correct. Yes.
But all the facilities are kind of...
Yeah, I don't think they've...
One set for everybody?
I don't think they've had issues with that. I mean, they have, so they have...
Okay. Well, it's not, like I say, it's, I don't know that it's an appropriate concern, but it is a concern.
I mean, I think when they put their employees together, there's, you know, there's different types of employees that come in here, and they try to, both from ethnic perspective. So, if they have a group of folks from, say, Jamaica or Mexico, they try to put those together in a cluster so that it's, you know, the language barriers and the types of food they might eat are similar. And a lot of times, people travel together, so they might be, already have relationships or friendships. So, the goal is that. The other goal is, is that a lot of the different kinds of workers that they get, the types that they're trying to use for this dormitory are the ones that are older. It's actually a profession of theirs. They go and they worked for three years out of their country. They have families. They send the money home, and they come back and work. So, they're more mature workers and, you know, and that's the process that undertake for that. But people want to get into that. I have, I have some knowledge of it, but I'm not an expert.
Thank you. Jeff Johnson again with White Birch. Actually, the dorm we're proposing is looking at being a housekeeping dorm only. So, for the most part, it would only be women in there, is what we're looking at right now.
Thank you.
Not really. I've been aware of this project for quite a while. This has been discussed for a long time. Excuse me. It's, so, I mean, it's, this is something that is indeed needed. The number of employees that they have that are transient, coming from outside the area primarily, because we just don't have the population base here to support the workforce that is needed to run the resort. So, this is an issue that has been ongoing for quite a while, and this is an effort to supply housing for those people. And as David said, most of these people do not have vehicles, you know. So, they're here basically at the mercy of whatever transportation can be supplied. There are other areas that could have been farther away from this location, but then the logistical aspect of getting them from there to here would be a little bit, you know, insurmountable, especially if they need to be coming in on a, you know, short call or something, and for the number of them that would be housed, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, David.
All right. Thank you.
Gary, would you like to give us your staff review?
Sure. Again, the applicant is White Birch. The current address of the property is 30297 Airport Road. The legal description is Lot 1, Block 1, Breezy Point Resort, M&amp;H Complex. The zoning is commercial. The applicable city code is 153.040. Existing conditions, it's a mixed-use planned use development that was approved in September of 2013. The property was plotted as one parcel, an M&amp;H complex. It contains an existing dormitory, laundry, maintenance facility, fence scrapyard, and a stormwater retention area. The proposal is to construct a 30-by-144 two-story dormitory north of the existing maintenance building, and the fence scrapyard would be removed. Site is approximately 103, 304 square feet. The site hosts a mixed-use PUD that was approved in 2013. The existing impervious coverage is 40.9%. The proposed impervious coverage is 49.7%. The allowable impervious coverage in the commercial zone is 50%. The site is serviced by Municipal Sewer. The proposed building meets setbacks. The proposed use does not conflict with adjacent properties that are zoned. Actually, it's pretty similar to the existing use that's there. The use conforms to the comprehensive plan as it promotes commercial and housing development in appropriate zones. The 153.062 of the zoning code requires 15 stalls per unit for parking. There's 10 units that are being proposed. That parking, we have parking restrictions in the ordinance. It allows for a deviation from that by use of the conditional use permit if it's so approved. The use will not be injurious to the public and will help to enhance the appearance of the area. Scrapyard to be eliminated, and there's one additional driveway proposed. The options that the Planning Commission could take would be to deny the conditional use permit application. If there is a denial, the commission should state the reason for the denial. You could approve the conditional use with conditions, and the following may be appropriate conditions for approval of the conditional use permit. Building permit to be acquired, building to conform to State Building Code and appropriate setbacks, surface water to be directed to stormwater retention facility, impervious coverage shall not exceed 50%, 10 parking stalls shall be provided, parking to be hard-surfaced, concrete or botominous, no outside storage, applicant to pay all appropriate sewer hookup fees, and any other that the commission may choose.
Questions, Jerry?
No, I wouldn't have any questions at this time.
Do we know, is the sewer system adequate to handle another that many units?
Yes.
The water retention, where is that going? Notice on the north end, there's a low, big kind of a hole there. Is that what that's for there?
Maybe I can answer that question. That stormwater retention pond that is on the north end of this piece of property was originally installed by the city at the time that Airport Road was improved. It was meant to be a regional facility for stormwater retention. At the time that the laundry and dormitory was done in 2013, the city actually deeded that piece of property over to White Birch, and that was used in their impervious coverage calculations. So, it's actually in the name of the White Birch, but it is, was owned by the city. There is an easement over it that it has to be a stormwater retention pond.
Question?
If we approve this number eight, could we put in there and keep the buffer in? I mean, they say they're going to, but if we don't put it in there, it may disappear, right?
To answer your question, I think that the commission can, if they so choose, can add any conditions that they think are appropriate for the project.
Keep that in mind while I go to the... Any other questions? If not, we'll go to public input again. If anyone would like to provide some input to this application, you approach the podium and introduce yourself, give us your name and address.
I wrote my name and address on the paper out there.
Okay.
My name is Mark Anderson and I own a piece of property that will be 50 feet from this building.
Mark, could you give us your address also?
My what?
Your address.
My address is 21305 County Road 20, Clarissa, Minnesota 56440. Anyway, I didn't, it used to be that people could build houses in these areas in there. Is that not true? Or has this been commercial for 50 years?
Do you have an answer for that?
The art, this piece of property is zoned commercial. Multiple-family housing is allowed via conditional use in a commercial district. The area adjacent to the west and the north is zoned R3, and R3 allows for single-family dwellings. I believe they can go up to a conditional, are up to a duplex with a conditional use in the R3 zone, but there is a separation there.
I didn't mean to lie to you. I am here. I talked to this gentleman days ago. But I didn't realize, now, that piece we looked at that is what I'm concerned about, that's been zoned commercial a long time?
You're, the piece that we're considering this evening is zoned commercial, and it's been commercial for a long time.
How about the piece right close to it, which...
The piece that you are concerned about as your personal property is zoned R3 and has been R3 for a long time.
Okay. Explain R3 to me very simply.
Pardon?
It's, it can be single dwelling then.
Yes.
I, I'm wondering if this discussion is at all germane to this application. It seems like we're straying away from the discussion of this application.
Well, the lot we're talking about is 50 feet from this building, so I consider that germane.
Well, your point is what? That's...
I just, I just wondered. So, it has, it's had almost zero value since its acquisition by my family, zero. Now, it's going to be less than zero. So, just wondered what was happening.
Patrick, could you pull up the map so we can actually look and see what parcels we're talking about here? Is that possible?
Not sure. Oh, I don't know what I'm talking about. Sorry.
It was 50 feet from the building proposal.
Yep.
Can you see it right here?
This one, Tom?
Yeah.
This one right here, you can see it from the air.
If you'd go from the northwest corner of the property, it would be kitty-cornered one lot over.
So it's on...
Is it this lot here or this lot here?
It's adjacent to Terminal Road.
Northwest, right there.
Right, that's it, right there.
Okay, and that's on Terminal Road?
Yes.
Not Airport Road?
Not Airport, it's on Terminal.
So it's, it's basically behind, if we would think of behind the, where the new dormitory would be?
Behind and to the west, or to the north of the, a tad.
And we're meeting all the setbacks?
Yes.
And so a house built on that property would still be meeting the setback?
Yes, but no one, unless they escaped from an insane asylum, would build a house there. It renders this piece of property mega-less than nothing. So, but I'll stop pestering you. Maybe we'll visit another day. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Neil Narvison, Narvison Management. I guess 6810 County Road 11, Breezy Point. I also am wearing the hat of the owner of the Commander Restaurant and Bar, which is 30279 Airport Road. It's actually Narvison Management that owns that building. If we look at that, Patrick, I was wondering, could you pull up the survey and just pull up that line between Commander and the current dormitories? And then, Mr. Chairman, can I just give you a couple of pictures?
Unfortunately, I just have one set.
Actually, what you want to do is set it on the table where you're speaking. We have an overhead camera that will look down at what you've got.
Okay, I got, I got a set here too, so.
So everyone can see that?
On the table right here.
Actually, move it over to the left some more.
Left, the side.
She's going to zoom it up on the screen here in a second, Neil. If you look up, you can kind of see where it is.
Okay.
As soon as she does that, we'll know.
So, I'm not here to dispute the project. I'm, I'm just here to talk about a couple of things.
Do you want to move it to the center a little bit more? And then Deb will enlarge it.
Yep.
Might have to end up moving the micro-
I was going to say, you might want to move the microphone a little bit. Put the paper in the center and then move the microphone so that it still picks you up, picks up your voice.
We don't do this too often, so she's got to do the zoom feature, and it's a different button. Not that one.
So my, so again, I have one issue and I have one, one general comment about the current situation there. So, I've had a lot of history with this property. As a matter of fact, the original building, the building that's closest to our property line, I went to work in for White Birch in 1988 when I first moved to Breezy Point. And so I remember when that was the White Birch corporate offices. And then eventually, I think in 96, the corporate offices moved out. Eventually, as, as the resort was presenting, they converted it into the dormitories. But in 2013, one of the concerns I had is there's two doors on the south end of that property which basically border the north end of the Commander property. And my concern was being a dormitory, I was wondering if we were going to have issues with kids coming and going, particularly kids on bicycles, which a lot of these kids traveled with, and mixing that with bar and restaurant traffic, especially at night with people coming and going and the like. And basically, I got told that the dorms needed those doors for ingress and egress, which was fine, and that we had to leave things sort of as-is. But if you look at my picture, the picture that we're referencing right here with the GIS drawings from the county, that property line is, I guess, I would say quite a bit closer, or is depicted quite a bit closer than what I'm seeing on that survey that's drawn, that's in your packet for tonight. I, I was out there today, and the monument or the marker on the southeast corner is still in the front yard, and you can still see it. One of my pictures actually depicts that marker, and I'll, I'll get to that in a minute. And then sort of looks down the building toward the, toward, I guess, basically the west as he moved toward where the new dorm building was built and eventually out to the corner of the property. My problem issue is somewhere last week, one of the maintenance people from Breezy Point contacted one of my maintenance managers and said, "Look, in conjunction with this planned project, we're going to tear out a bunch of concrete that's on the south side of the building." And of course, I've been sort of forced to maintain parking lot up to sidewalks and concrete and things that are on that side of the building, which basically exist partially on my property. And so the issue I'm having is that if we're going to all of a sudden tear out sidewalks, for example, if we'll go to my picture number five, and I think we can see this on the overhead still. I just overlaid that parking area up to the sidewalk, and you can see the sort of the weeds growing out of the sidewalk and some of the things along that doorway on that side of the building. And in my version of what I think the property line is, my property line continues to run right down the middle of that sidewalk and eventually sort of departs from the sidewalk. And I think if you get to the end of that parking area, sort of the end of that original building to the west or to the left side of the picture as we're looking at it, I think eventually the sidewalk is all on their property. And so, for example, pavement that I just put in this summer that butts up to that sidewalk could potentially be damaged or left in some kind of disrepair up against nothing, whatever the intent is for that area on this project. So, the issue I have is what exactly is going to happen on the south boundary of this property? The, the survey depicts some tear-out or to-be-removed. I don't know exactly what's going to happen. Nobody from White Birch has approached me on that, just a maintenance man telling another maintenance man that we're going to be ripping some of this out. You can see that there's some other structural stuff around those trees, all of which maintains up against things that I maintain. And again, I would dispute sort of the drawing, the survey drawing of where the building locations are just within inches of what I actually would depict as the property line. Now unfortunately, I can't locate the west marker because when the dorm was built and the trees were taken out and the landscaping was done, that marker seems to have disappeared. And so, I think I depicted, just so you could see it in this picture number four, I guess I've got to slide it up for it to be seen. There's the marker in my squared-in area. And then there's looking down through the edge of the building. And so you can see my property line goes somewhere across the top step of those steps and right down the edge of the building. And then sort of depicts itself back in this picture to run right in front of the power boxes, which it does in fact, it is in fact drawn that way on the survey map. But if you sort of zoom in in this picture, you can clearly see that part of the sidewalk's on my side of the line, part of the sidewalk's on their side of the line. And so, again, the issue I have is if there's going to be something that's going to drastically occur. And by the way, I asked for this all to occur eight years ago in the original CUP, to eliminate those doors, create a little bit better of a boundary and a barrier, thinking maybe for safety reasons, if not, if not nothing else, it would just sort of shut off the Commander parking lot and all the things that might happen there to the, to the activities of the dormitories. But, but again, we couldn't do that back then, and so we've been maintaining to this now. And I just don't want the game to all of a sudden change and to start altering things that we've just spent money on to try and maintain and look like something. My second issue, and again, this one isn't so much an issue as just a comment. And this one will take me to some of my later pictures. When this project happened, one of the things I was assured by everybody, the planning commission, I think Tom Mingford was the chair back then, and everybody else, is that these, these remodels were going to be consistent across both buildings. And so basically, we were going to get a new dorm building here, new siding, new roof, new windows, and we were going to get an improvement here to this disaster that basically has existed since, probably since we, we all moved out of it back in 1996 when I worked for White Birch. So, for 20-plus years that I've owned the Commander, we basically have been still staring at that old dilapidated building, bladed building, whatever you want to call it. There's been some things done to it. They, in this picture, tore off the deck that encroached on top of my property, and somebody nailed a piece of wrought iron railing across the patio door up top. But the damaged siding, the damaged brick, the damaged look, not painted, all of that, it still exists. And we've been looking at that now for all eight years of the current conditional use permit for that existing dormitory remodel plan. And so my comment is, before we move on to Phase 3 or whatever phase we're moving on to, maybe we could move back to Phase 1 and at least finish the conditions that I was told were going to happen on that building and clean that up a little bit before we leave it behind for, for the next phases. So, so basically, the property line issue, the damage to our property in that property line issue potentially, and then just the issue of the condition of that property are my concerns. Thank you. Yep. Any questions or anything for me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, before Neil says something.
So, all those cars parking there are actually parking on your property?
You know, White Birch has been pretty good about that. Most of the cars parking there are my employees that you see in those pictures. Marcy had a good question, Commissioner Weaver, I'm sorry, had a good, good question about the parking. I mean, the parking has at times been an issue over the years. You know, the shuttle comes and goes and picks kids up there, and that's fine. I, I mean, for the most part, that's quick in and quick out. But sometimes it's a little congested, as you all know, back behind that Commander parking lot and that in-and-out flow. And occasionally, we have people that do have cars, and we just kind of ran through a little bit of an experience with them, and we kind of maintained it ourselves, just put a note on the car reminding people that, hey, this isn't a parking lot. But we had one this summer that we couldn't get moved for a while and eventually got moved. But resort's always been good about that, so don't feel that that's been much of an issue. But of course, with two doors on that side, there's going to be some coming and going from that side of the building, so. And again, it's not the two-door concern, it's just that we didn't eliminate the two-door concern, and now we're talking about, even in that drawing that we're still looking at, we're talking about sort of a gray area of property line that I think was defined to show that everything's on their side of the line, which maybe isn't. But I don't even know if the sidewalk's really drawn in that picture. So in, in their defense, maybe it's not even accurately depicted in that picture. But when I own sort of the south side of a piece of sidewalk that I'm butted up against, and they own the north side of a two-and-a-half-foot piece of sidewalk, what do we do about it? My only concern is that if we're going to leave sort of the configuration of the building, I don't know what we would remove that sidewalk for at this point, you know? I'd still like to see the building get a, get a coat of paint and look a little bit better shape than what it's looked like. I certainly wouldn't mind seeing some of that overgrown tree and vegetation stuff moved out of there. But I just don't want to see it damage that property line to the point where, you know, I don't know what we do to, to put it back together, so.
Marcy, you have...
I do have a question. So with everything that you've stated, is there one or more specific requests that you have for this that perhaps were any earlier? Because you stated that there were some commitments made earlier that hadn't been completed. Are there specifics that you're aware of that were not included in previous figures?
I do not have a copy of the original CUP, but I thought that one of the conditions was that the existing building got more of a remodel outside than it did get. And so it essentially looks exactly the same as when I worked there 30 years ago. Other than the roof's new, I do know the roof's new. But I think every, every roof in Breezy Point's new after the hailstorm in 2016. But, so I think from that standpoint, I think it just needs to be maintained a little bit. And so that was really more of a comment than anything else. But the only condition I would like now, I guess if you're asking moving forward, is I just don't want to see something that I partially own and they partially own where we've got this zero property line situation disrupted just for the sake of disrupting it. You know, I don't see what the purpose would be for that.
I have a quick question of Jerry. Am I correct, Jerry, that the removal that's indicated on here is a part of the project?
Actually, I think that that question should be directed at the, at the proposers. I think they should be, I don't want to put words in their mouth, quite frankly. I think Mr. Narvison has, has established the fact that he would like to work with the, with the property owner to resolve the issue. And I think that, I think that's a step in the right direction. But I would leave it up to the developers to state what their intention is.
David, I'll ask you a question, but we'll finish with questions for you first. I'm prepared.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Nope.
Thank you, Neil.
Yep.
David, back, back to Mike.
Any other public?
Oh, yes. Good, good, good. Keep me in line. Any, anyone else we'd like to speak?
Yeah, I'd like to speak. Jeff Smith, Jeff Smith, 9866 Weaver's Point Road. I own the hangar home that is right across the street from this project. And I understand the need for housing for workers. It's hard enough to get workers around the country right now, and it's really important for the resort to be able to attract workers. So I'm in favor of solving that problem as a community. I'm concerned that we have a 60-person dormitory going in across the street from a unit that we're trying to keep very nice and attract quality residents to the area. In fact, we, we were able to help Kuna Medical Center, who has a clinic up on, on 11, attract a physician from Florida to come up here on the, the basis that he had a nice place to live. And he's going to rent, starting this Friday, our hangar home. And the exit from this 60-person facility has headlights going right into the main room of, of that hangar, which is not what I assumed the zoning would allow across the street. So, to be specific, I have three issues. One is the one-way driveway takes the traffic that is going to have to be there, whether they have cars or not, someone's going to have to shuttle them back and forth. And many times, that's at odd hours of the day and night. The one-way traffic that they're proposing comes out right against a residential property mine across the street. So I have an issue with that. Right now, the, the more commercial use and heavy traffic is closer to the corner. And I would suggest that you figure out how to reuse the existing driveway with two-way traffic. If you go up to the, the plant, the site plan that's proposed, the existing in-and-out that is there today is two-way currently, and I don't see any reason that that couldn't be constructed in such a way that you get rid of the narrow driveway coming out pointing to residential properties across the street. Secondly, the, the PUD, I wasn't here obviously when that was put in place, but it, it's pretty clear that maintaining that property hasn't been a top priority of the resort. They've got a lot of priorities, and it's a difficult set of properties to manage. But this is way out of their sightline, and it's obvious because there's tires and old appliances and everything else across the street. And I'm just concerned that... And I'm just concerned that a buffer of poplar trees and a cyclone fence is not what we're trying to create in Breezy Point as an architectural buffer. So the second issue I've got is to make sure that that buffer is a maintained condition of this conditional use. And then, thirdly, I'd like to see, I know this isn't an architectural review committee, but the other two properties are not what I would consider kept up to good condition, and I would just be concerned that we're putting low-quality exterior on this building that is going to need a lot of maintenance in a short period of time. So exterior design, the traffic pattern, and the buffer are the three things that I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Anyone else like will speak? Okay, we'll go back to the applicant's presentation, and I might, David, if you remember my question, David.
Yeah, I'll just go through all the individuals that were here. I see Mr. Anderson is gone, but to respect the comments that he made, that he was kitty-corner to this particular piece of property, I just want to remind the planning commission that the stormwater retention pond is, that area that it's confined in is about 75 feet wide. So the closest the building will be to his property, well, to his corner, specifically to his corner, is about 80 feet. So if he were to build anything and were to crunch into his setbacks to his corner, he's going to be about 100 feet or so from any building he might be to is going to be about 100 feet from the structure that we would build. So it isn't like, it seemed to infer that it was like right across, you know, it was going to be in his backyard. It's not really in his backyard. There's quite a bit of buffer between that, and, you know, we've got the power line going through there on the backside of the properties, and we've, you know, our plan is to be 20 feet instead of the 15 feet from the setbacks, or, you know, we're doing the best we can to sort of keep away from our sidelines and property lines to, you know, give a little bit more buffer against our neighborhood. So I just wanted to make that. As far as Mr. Narverson's comments go, I'll just start out with a little education on GIS versus a legitimate land survey done by a licensed surveyor. If, and I know you all have looked at the county GIS maps, but the GIS maps from a land surveyor's perspective, and that's what my profession is, is simply a cartoon. It's a good depiction of where property lines are within a geographic area and how your property might be situated on it. It's not something to carry around and use as leverage as to, this is what the county surveyed my property as. It's not the tool that it's designed for. It's simply to assess and understand properties and how pieces fit into general locations. To get into specific areas of, is it mine or his, or where does the line go? I mean, that's when you have a licensed surveyor engaged, which we did, and both this drawing as well as the one that was used in 2013 show the same thing. Now, I've been out there, and I understand Mr. Narverson's concern, and I have no doubt of what his representation is, that that's a legitimate concern. I mean, when I suggested that we remove that to draw down the impervious coverage to be below the 50%, I mean, I intentionally looked at that area and said, well, what purpose does that serve? It serves no purpose to the existing dorm building that's there, or probably, other than there's a sidewalk there. So it's, in my sense, it's a nuisance. My original thought was, Mr. Narverson, was that it could be jackhammered out and that, you know, and I've done some jackhammering myself, where you wouldn't disturb your pavement. That being said, it would be re-landscaped with rock and some suitable back, backing, which would eliminate the deterioration of or slumping of your pavement. That being said, sitting right here amongst you, and that being said on the plan, I can eliminate that to be removed and leave it there and still fit the 50%, you know, fit the 50%. I'm just going to creep up. It's not going to be 49.7, it might be 49.9 when we get done with it, but I think the applicant or the conditional use permit says maintain impervious below 50%. I think we can do that without removing the sidewalk. So the sidewalk could stay the way it is, and it would just, the impervious calculation will change ever so slightly, because we're not talking about, we're talking about a three-foot sidewalk that's, you know, less than 100 feet long. So have no problem in leaving it, but my intention was to remove it, simply to throw in, you know, sewer rock, a base in sewer rock and landscape it and, you know, stabilize that area because it really, you know, wasn't necessary to be a sidewalk. Sort of in, as he's suggesting, promotes the use of those doors. The doors are there because, quite frankly, with, you know, safety and all the other issues that go on with architecture, it's an exit. If the building were to get on fire, there needed to be some reason to get an ambulance inside or some, you know, safety people in to help somebody that's in need, there's doorways there. So the doorways are there, maybe not as a convenience, because the property owners today don't share common, you know, use of their properties, so it's sort of an odd situation as Neil described. But they're there in an emergency, no different than if you had a breakaway gate for the fire department to break through, you know, to get into someplace. So we can leave the sidewalk, we can still retain below the 50% impervious coverage, and if I needed to alter something, we can, you know, possibly figure out a way to alter it. One way would be to reduce the parking lot to maybe eight versus 10, and that would definitely cover it. I'm not really familiar with, I did look at the old applicant or the old conditional use permit, and I did not see anything in there that talked about, you know, matching up outside appearances of building. Might have been a discussion at the time, you know, at a public hearing like this, but, and I understand its concern, and I would guess it's probably on the resort's to-do list, but it, you know, it is, I guess what I'm going to say it is what it is. It's not necessarily part of the application that we have in front of you today. It's the other, the other building. But if we need to talk about it, I know Jeff is here, and he can give us some additional history on that. Mr. Smith's comments, just want to remind, I think, Jerry, if you put that, if we had the zoning map up, the property across the street on the airport is commercial, I believe. Airport or airport. So it's, I don't know if we have a picture of that.
Remember zoning map?
Okay. So it's airport zoning is commercial.
The east side of Airport Road is airport zoned, the west side of Airport Road, it's commercial. Most of it is commercial.
So it's, you know, it's not fair to tell me it's residential, I guess is my point. I understand there's some lovely homes that are hangar homes there, but it is an airport property. The, and we can talk about it, the one-way driveway, I understand, again, his concern about that driveway coming out, there's a couple of alternatives, you know, one, we could switch the one-way and come in and change the diagonal parking the opposite direction. That would be one option. The other one would be if we did eliminate a parking stall or two, we could do a loop in there, do just a quick little loop turnaround and just use that common driveway piece there. But I don't necessarily have the solution. I mean, I have what we've submitted, but we'd be open to have that discussion if you wanted to, you know, come up with a way, if you felt that that was something that we needed to accommodate. The buffer along the front, as I've mentioned in my proposal, I mean, you definitely can make that a condition that, you know, outside of whatever we might need for access purposes, we would not, you know, change the character of what exists there. The exterior design, I, you know, I don't, again, Jeff is here, and I can maybe let him explain to you what that might be if we know what the material is, but, you know, the same folks that are building the, constructing the homes out at White Birch Village are engaged to help us build this as well. So the plans that we have before you, you know, I can't speak what that material is, but I think it's probably, you know, likely more similar to what the last building that was built is, you know? Would that be true, Jeff? So what was built last, the most south-westerly portion of the building, would be similar construction to this, this type of thing, this particular building. So don't, you know, I mean, we'll do our best to make it look in appearance the way it is. We kept it shorter, we put the dormer for the entrance into that kitchen on it to kind of break up the long front on the view on the parking side of it. And, you know, I mean, you have the pictures of how it looks, so. So the buffer stays, the driveway, if you think we need to work on that, I'm willing to sit here and figure that out with you, or you can just simply tell us what your preference is and so that we don't delay this, you know, just let us come up with a plan that, you know, would alter that but stay under the 50%, which might reduce the parking. Now, I don't know, that's kind of complicated, and I could sit down and scribble something up quick, but I, you know, it's imperative that we move forward with an approval tonight simply because we do need to get housing established out here from a constructional and seasonal aspect to get construction going. We actually will be submitting a building permit within days of approval granted tonight to accommodate workforce that we need for 2022. It's needed that bad. The trend of needing international workers has grown significantly, and not just in Breezy Point, in all the resorts in the state of Minnesota, quite frankly, and locally. I mean, it's just a trend that started actually back in about 2017 where they went from the traditional summer student employees where they went to, you know, different, and simply because we were not able to attract local folks to do the jobs that those people are doing here from a hospitality perspective, so.
Thank you, David. Jerry, do you have a recommendation on how we proceed?
Can I ask questions before?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. I just had a couple of questions. What's the relative elevation of the first floor plan with Phase Three to Phase One and Two? Do you know?
I maybe don't know. Actually, I think, I think.
It's going to be lower.
Phase, the first phase or the first dormitories are lower.
Correct.
The street side, you get to the backside and terminal road, it raises up to about the same elevation of what the elevation of this proposed structure would be.
That's really the question, because my point was that the buffer there is covering up things that are about this high off the ground. This is a two-story building, and it's sitting up high. That site is higher than the road by seven or eight feet is my guess.
If you looked at the maintenance building that's there, there's going to need to be a retaining wall between the maintenance building and this new building. So that building, if you think about.
David, you probably can't be heard on the recording.
So if you put up the, if the site, if you threw up the site plan again. So the particular building that we're talking about is actually going to be lower than the building that's the maintenance building.
The eve height?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it's got to be sunk, it's got to be sunk down because the stormwater pond is low enough to capture this water. And this, if you were to go out there right now, and I know you're familiar with it, but if you actually drove in to that entrance and looked at like where the dumpster is, about halfway through that property, we need to balance, you know, where the building is, and so that building is going to sink down into the ground, where the eve height on the two-story building is probably going to be lower than the eve height on the maintenance building that's there.
Okay.
Because I talked to them originally about matching into the buildings, and they were like, well, that's not going to work because the buildings aren't going to be, you know, aren't going to fit together that way. So we're going to be dropping it down. There's going to be some kind of retaining device off the north side of that maintenance building to accommodate the drop in elevation of the building.
Okay.
So it will be lower.
That relates to my screening comment, that I don't know if the existing screening is sufficient or not based on the height of this facade of the building, but it sounds like it's going to be lower than the maintenance building eve height.
Yes.
So it may indeed be sufficient where it is. In terms of the parking, if you got rid of that impervious coverage, couldn't you add enough backout room to turn, or is that just not possible?
It's possible I could do a backout or even a, like a short little cul-de-sac thing, except my issue is, is we do have trucks or, you know, the buses and the vans that come in there and load, so it's kind of a challenge to not have them run all the way through without having something more significant, which, you know, it's possible, again, if we were to eliminate at least that northerly parking stall, that I could do some kind of, probably a T-turnaround instead of, you know, I'd have to make a significant turnaround in order to accommodate it versus having some either a T-turnaround and/or some sort of loop in there, which will, you know, to make the loop work, I would need to almost come back out towards, close towards the building setback line that's in here, you know, to make the loop sufficient enough to accommodate, you know, vehicles maneuvering.
Come on up, Jeff.
Jeff Johnson, representing White Birch. If the headlights are the issue, can't we just make that, instead of the exit, make that the entry? And then he doesn't have headlights pointing at his house, and then we come out the entry that's already there? And then, like you said before, just change the parking the other way? I think that would, I think that would take care of the issue if the issue is the headlights.
Yeah, it would for me. I like that also.
Yeah, if I could offer a suggestion?
Sure.
We had a very similar situation when I lived in Apple Valley. We had a street that came right directly into the front of our house and teed. I had a corner lot, but the street came right in. And to Jeff's point, yes, it does get irritating, especially if somebody late at night comes down the street with their brights on, okay? And we would see it because it went right into our bedroom, okay? To offer that, you know, what we're talking about, instead of going south to north, go north to south, increase the top radius of that curve there, change the angle of parking, and then move your dumpster pad back a little bit, open up that area coming into that lower driveway there. That would solve the headlight problem as well. It was, probably make it easier for the dumpster to get in there, because he'd come in the north side, come in back up, and pick up the dumpster.
Yeah, I've heard of the, half the dumpster sites there are ready.
Well, I mean, half the dumpster.
But we'd have to figure it out.
But it would be something that, you know, 15 minutes of jackhammer time and then put another slab a little bit farther away. Wouldn't change your impervious coverage at all, it would just make it a little more convenient. You just need a little bit more radius on the south end if you're going to make that the exit.
Yeah, I agree.
That works for me. The other question that I had is, since this is the first public hearing, isn't there a process that has to go through the city council for conditional use? You're talking about getting a permit tomorrow, I was a little surprised.
Well, I think conditional use permits are handled here.
The conditional uses and variances are final.
The, the conditional uses and variances are, are final after the planning commission takes action. If there's an appeal process, if in fact somebody wants to appeal to the city council. But they're acting as the board of adjustment in this, in this role and they take care of variances and conditional uses.
Okay.
That's Breezy's process.
Okay. I wasn't trying to throw a fly in the ointment. I just was looking for the education.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Just, just.
Which one?
Just based on my personal experience, you don't want those shuttle buses backing up in there.
No.
Amen.
Yes, that's, the T didn't make any sense.
I have them leaving, you know, less than a hundred yards from my house and it wakes me up every, every time they come.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
So whatever you do, you don't want them backing up.
Yeah, and we're fine. I mean, it seems like that's a sadist factory to the neighbors of changing the one-way to go south versus going north and then altering the, you know, the angled parking to fit that, you know, correct path, so, and making some slight modifications to what a rest is. So I'm, I'm okay with making that adjustment and submitting a new site plan.
I'll go back to my question, Jerry. I have a little thing to ask you, Jerry. How is cross-selling we can?
Well, I, you know, one, one of my recommendations would be a personal recommendation that the developer and, and the adjacent neighbors work together, not only just before the approval or disapproval process, but throughout their, their living together as neighbors. I might be a little bit strong in that, but I think the history hasn't been that good. And I think there, there's a need to talk rather than use the planning commission as a, a parent.
Is, is it useful for us to make that a condition?
I don't think you need to make that a condition, but I think, I think there's enough testimony this evening that would, would attest to the fact that that's necessary. And, and in all good conscience, I can't, you know, you can't legislate what people are going to do, but you can legislate what happens to the project.
Can I say please say that we are excited for that to happen?
Yes, I would agree.
Yes.
I don't know that I have, but.
No, I, I mean, I think what, what you've heard tonight is, you know, a commitment to work with the neighbors to accomplish those modifications to the plan, to stay below the 50%, to change the street one-way location entrance and the parking. It really doesn't change the drawing a whole lot. It just changes how some lines are fixed on the drawing. So I think the application, as it was submitted, still holds all of the information you need to make your decision. If you feel it's appropriate to add the condition to, to change the one-way street and parking, I'm fine with you doing that as well. I mean, we will accommodate that and, and as soon as I can get the plan revised, set up a meeting with Mr. Smith and show him what we've done and make sure it accommodates what his desires are, maybe be able to more, you know, stand out on the property and show him where those elevations are better.
I don't need that. If it's one-way coming in that way and that's part of the condition for eternity, I'm good with that.
And I'm okay with that, too.
And, and you have those discussions with Neil also?
Well, I just did with Neil. I mean, I think Neil and I, I mean, I'm fine with not removing the sidewalk.
We leave the sidewalk, I mean, if we're leaving the doors, let's leave the sidewalk as well.
And I'm fine with doing that. I just need to change the impervious coverage calculation on the, on the drawing. The other concern that I heard earlier that could be addressed would be that the property line be reestablished. I think the, the stakes reestablished so that they know exactly where those property lines are by a certified surveyor. Sure, I can, I mean, we've done it, so, I mean, I'll have that southwest corner re-marked. I mean, you can see between them, so it's not, you know.
The southeast one's there.
Well, and they show the southwest one is as well, so, I mean, I'm assuming that it is, and if it's not, I'll have them mark it.
Just want to understand.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's, you can see between them.
Right. Any other public input? If not, I will.
I have something. So if we turn the parking or the entrance to come the other way, I, I just can't remember offhand, what's on the other side of the street if people are gonna come out that way?
Cliff. That's what I thought. It's actually a little south of me, so it really doesn't affect me like it did Jeff.
Okay.
So I'm okay with that.
I just didn't want it, have it just go back to someone else's house and then we're just back in a.
It's actually between us, right?
I have it pulled up for you there. So if this is the existing driveway, this would be the lot that would be affected. Is this you, Cliff?
I've got the green roof, yes.
The lot between you. But right now, there's nothing built there.
No, there will be shortly, but right now it isn't.
So the exit is where that circle is on the?
Correct.
It's the existing drive for the maintenance facility right now.
Oh, okay. That's north of me.
Right.
Right.
So that's an empty lot basically there.
But either way, if, if that were, I don't know if you want me to mic or not, but either way, if that were in and out, the same traffic is gonna happen.
Right.
Out of that driveway, any way you cut it, so. I don't think that's gonna make any difference from what exists today because they can use that driveway today now.
I have that second floor right there. I will close the public hearing and move to our next agenda, which is official action on this application. I would entertain motion if someone agrees.
Well, I would make a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the letters one through seven as they stand, adding a number eight to just confirm to keep the buffer maintained and contain a natural frontage. I would also add number nine to change the one-way drive so that the entrance is on the north side and then change the directional parking. I would add number 10 that we discussed leaving the sidewalk as is on the Phase One, I believe, building and.
I missed that one, I'm sorry, Marcia. You're trying to keep up, you're fast talker.
Number, number 10, which was leaving the sidewalk for that first property.
Thank you.
And number 11 then would be just adding that marker if there is one missing for the property lines.
Hey, we have a motion, we have a second.
Oh, Jeff's good. Jeff, that's up to you.
You've actually closed the public hearing.
I, I did close the public hearing.
It concerns one of the conditions, just clarification.
Oh, I.
It's your calls, sir, but you did close the.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Jeff Johnson, representing White Birch. Just a question on number six, no outside storage. Certainly, I understand the, the boneyard part of it, but what does that exactly mean if we've got bikes there? If we've got a van there, that's a housekeeping van type of thing that sits there for the winter maybe? Is that gonna be an issue? Is that outside storage or is that not outside storage?
Jerry, do you have any action there?
A licensed vehicle that parked there does not constitute outside storage.
Okay.
The intent is that there not be a corner of the maintenance building that, say, the northwest corner of the maintenance building becomes the boneyard.
And I get that. Like, I'm just asking about the, the vans and/or like I said, the bikes.
If you comply to outside storage to the ordinance, I don't think you're gonna have any problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a second.
Our second to that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
The only thing, what was number 11 you had?
Remarking the property lines.
Can, can we require that, Jerry? I suppose we can, huh?
Can you require remarking the property lines? Absolutely.
Okay, all right. No more questions. Part of what I would point out, though, if you look at the legend provided on the survey, I've had, it shows denoted markaments, monuments found, and it says that they found those markaments because they're dark black. They just may have to scrape away the dirt or something, but they should be in the ground.
Chris, do you have anything to add?
No.
Please.
Nope.
Teresa?
Again, does building code require this to be sprinkled?
I can't answer that question.
Okay, it's probably not an issue for this group.
But I do, I, I think the, the other dormitory had to be sprinkled. I think this one may have to be also.
Okay. Okay, we're ready. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
The votes the same? Motion aye. Thank you. You have a one.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to open forum number two. Again, if anyone would like to speak, please come to the podium and speak.
We have discussion of redevelopment proposal.
Yeah.
You had one there, sir, G.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did. Well, Dave will take care of open forum because it appears on the. Then I will close open forum number two and move back to, I'm sorry, discussion of redevelopment proposal for Lake Shore Drive.
This is more of an FYI, just to prepare you that next, next month, you'll be dealing with another conditional use application to resubdivide an existing piece of property and redevelop that piece of property. It looks like the property wants to do an accessory structure in excess, in excess of 1,280 square feet. It looks like there's a proposed moving of a structure which requires a CUP, and it's also a, a lot split. This is, you know, I, I think if you drive by this piece of property, you'll, you'll see that it's pretty much in need of some redevelopment work and, and I think it's positive that it's being done, but I, we have to go through the process in order to make it, something happen there. So, so it's, this is a.
Is it just a, an individual?
It's an individual who has bought the piece of property and, and wants to redevelop With that, I'll, you know, I'll leave you, take a look at the piece of property. It's, it's just to forewarn you that this will be on your next agenda.
So the main thing is that larger garage he wants to build on the, the north lot, I assume, huh? Where they have the two garages? Did they have an existing and then they're gonna?
Well, he's got an existing garage there now and.
And a proposed.
And a proposed garage and the cumulative total is more than 1,280.
Right.
And in order to get to up to 1,600 square feet, there, it's a conditional use permit.
Right. The, the proposed one would still be far enough off the lake, correct? I'm just thinking.
According to the survey, you can see.
According to the survey, yeah.
The survey shows where the, the building envelope is.
Yeah, I see that. It's kind of.
And that is a sewer lot, correct, or would be a sewer lot?
Yeah, just about everything we deal with on, on Pelican is going to be a sewer lot.
Do you have any questions?
Uh, no, not right now.
Teresa?
No.
I do have a couple of comments. This is like two doors down from where I live. And this, I'm assuming what they wanna do is subdivide the lot into two one-acre parcels.
Yes.
There's a picture there, Tom.
Yep, that's what I'm looking at right now. And there's some issues there and has to do with the existing garage. That was, as a matter of fact, that was brought to my attention back in 1982 when I was talking to the original owner of this, who put up the garage and made a comment that that garage is a little bit too close to the, to the lot line. And if he ever did sell the property, it would be an issue because it's only eight feet off the property line. The dimension on the top part of the field, it's eight point two feet off the property line. And then also, if you go to the southern part, there's, there's a little demarcating or reference point there, the circle with a couple of black marks. There's two wells right there. Those two wells are probably within three feet of each other. And the proposed house, if they're going to be building this proposed house, is gonna be less than, you know, 10, 15 feet from that well. I don't know how they're gonna dig the foundation for that house because it's obviously going to be a walkout most likely. That well will be challenged, let's put it that way.
Wouldn't they just cap it?
Well, that's, that's one of the questions that you need to look at.
Yeah.
Is the location of that well specifically, when I say it's like three feet from the adjoining well.
I see that.
This far apart. If you walk the property, you can see it's a challenging well. And the, I'm not sure what they have as proposed addition to the relocated house. It looks like there's some concrete, there's that sidewalk, there's significant elevation difference there, so I'm not sure how that is going to work. I would advise everybody to, to go out to the property, take a close look at it and, you know, find out what. Can you turn on my microphone? Sorry.
To, to go out to the property, look at it because there are some significant topology issues as well as the location of that existing garage with respect to the property line and the wells with respect to the property line.
Is that, is that not a five-acre parcel there?
No, it's about a two-acre parcel.
Okay.
But it does have some checkered past as far as the legal description because.
Because I looked at that property and it, I can't remember the name.
Talking about the previous owner?
The previous owner.
Oh, that was Hackett.
He said that was a five-acre parcel.
No.
Approximately two.
Yep. It used to be a much larger parcel, but because there was another four lots that were between that property, which belonged to the Hacketts just recently, and then my property. And Stephanie Hader bought those four lots and built her house on that, okay? But I originally talked to the original owner, which was Mike Mills. This was back in the early 80s, and he had made the comment that his garage was a little bit close to the property line.
Maybe they had five-foot setback then.
Well, there wasn't, because he owned.
There wasn't any.
There wasn't really any issue because he owned, it was another 100 feet.
Right.
You know, going to the, going to the north. So that, that garage really wasn't an issue, but it, he had not conjoined any of the lots.
Okay. Next counter agenda is discussion of superdrive.
This is just a food for thought type thing also. At the last couple of meetings, we've been talking about sheds and, and the Circle Drive neighborhood that's part of the original resort where the, the lots are really small and there's not a lot of room to put a shed on, to even expand those existing structures. And one of the comments that came out of that meeting was maybe there should be some type of. type of, of special zoning that we could look at for that, that area. That being said, I did kinda ponder that for quite a while, and, and thought that I would take a stab at showing you what an existing zone, or a new zone could be, could look like for that area, for that specific area. I, this is meant to be discussion, or think about it, and at a later date, come up with something, if we need to, or if we even want to. But this is something that could be utilized for that specific neighborhood, and I'm, and I'm only thinking about that specific neighborhood, I'm not talking about the rest of the R3's areas, areas in town, because most of the other R3 areas are much bigger lot size, probably twice as big as what these original lots are. Again, it's just something for you to look at. If you think we wanna pursue this a little bit further, maybe we can have a discussion in the future about creating a new zone.
Sounds like we should try to do that.
Well. Take a, take a look at what I, what I provided you, if you think there's some merit in it, we'll, we'll have a discussion.
Thank you for your listening, Eric. Anything else?
I was just looking, limited camping on improved lots? So you could actually camp on it for a short time? Is that your thought?
We already allow that in the city, for up to 30 days.
Oh, that, yeah, but that's, I thought it said six months.
This is just proposed from another.
Right.
You pulled it out. It was just for discussion purposes.
Anything else?
Just got my eye.
If not, I'll call me in here. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I just wanted to run something by.
Yeah.